All right, we are going to get started. This is a regular meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. It's April 24th, 2025. It's my mom's 90th birthday, so this one is stuck in my mind.
She's a great woman. April, in 90 years.
I should have brought her in.
Yeah, you should have. My birthday is tomorrow. I'm hoping to get to her.
Oh, all right, all right. Yeah, you're in good company. She's in good company. All right, so anyway, not to get too distracted. So we always start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join us in silent prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's do introductions on the dais. Kristi Ruschel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
And I'm Commissioner Denise Dreehouse. I'm going to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Serrodamus.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. And then a motion to approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We've got a couple of presentations this morning. The first one is a proclamation declaring Work Zone Awareness Week. Tony Bryce is here from the Laborers 265. So we're going to ask you to come forward, if you don't mind, just to the dais. We are going to read the proclamation, say a few things, and then allow you to have a couple of words and talk about the importance of this proclamation. So without further ado, let's dive into the proclamation. So again, this is a proclamation recognizing National Work Zone Awareness Week, whereas it is with great reverence that we proudly honor all fallen work zone workers and recognize the safety of those who are currently working on our roads during National Work Zone Awareness Week. And whereas each year, National Work Zone Awareness Week aims to promote the safety of women and men who work to build our infrastructure and make our roads safer for our daily commutes.
And whereas, construction laborers are often the most vulnerable in the event of a work zone intrusion, and they work tirelessly in the elements, often extreme to improve the infrastructure for the public overall. Whereas in 2019, there have been over 24,000 work zone crashes on Ohio roadways in which workers were present, and nearly 40% of those intrusions. Whereas we urge all citizens to pay attention, slow down, and thank all road workers in Hamilton County for their service.
Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County does hereby proclaim April 21st through 25th, 2025, as National Work Zone Awareness Week in all of Hamilton County. And so before we allow you to say a few things, I just want to thank you for being here. I know that you were one of the workers that was a work zone worker, and so you have firsthand experience about some of the dangers that are present through people speeding through these zones or not paying attention through these zones. Never mind the conditions that you're working in, in the cold or in the hot. It's challenging work, and so thank you for bringing this to us, bringing it to our attention. And please pass on our gratitude to your colleagues for doing what they do every day so that we can drive safely from one place to the next. Commissioner Reese?
Yes, I just want to thank you and Local 265 and all the workers because a lot of times people complain about, you know, hey, when are we going to get this fixed? And then we have you all on the front lines fixing the streets and the roads so that we can get to work, we can get to, we can travel those roads, we can get to the soccer games, basketball games for the youth, and we can get to church in different places. And it doesn't happen with a magic wand. There are people, men and women like yourself, that are out there making sure that it happens. With that being said, there, it has to be respect. When you see workers working, we've got to slow down, we've got to move to the side. We've got to understand that these are human beings out here, join the work so that we can have the luxury of traveling and being able to have all these things that we do. So I just wanted to say thank you and thank you for this proclamation today because it reminds people that don't be in such a hurry. You're not going anywhere to get there, and it's not worth a life in order to get there. So thank you for being here today, and thank you, Commissioner, President Dreehouse, for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Please, please say a few words.
I would like to first thank the county for having me speak today about the proclamation. One thing I would like to mention is, you know, we, our members do spend a lot of time on the roadways, in the mornings, in the nights, and people drive and they don't pay attention, they just really, they don't think about it, you know? But we have to do the work because it needs to be done. And for our members, I would just ask everybody just to pay attention. If you see the orange barrels in the combs, slow down a little bit, move over, because them guys, they ain't paying attention. They, even though they inside the combs, what we call our safe zone, it's not safe. It's really not safe. Some people, they just, it doesn't sit well with them, or it doesn't even register to them that somebody's out there working, you know? And I would just ask that everybody just take your time and get to where you need to be, because we got to get home the same way we got to work. That's all I got.
Thank you. And thanks again for being here. We're going to come around and take a photo.
Okay. Nice smiles, one, two, three. Gotcha.
over to you.
Yes, thank you. April is Autism Month, and we have certainly a lot of families and youth and adults who are dealing with autism. We are blessed to have Children's Hospital here that has a focus to help with children and parents who have, who are on the spectrum. And so I didn't want this month to go past. However, there was something that caught my attention by a gentleman by the name of Vernon Jackson. And Vernon is an entrepreneur, and he's also a barber. And I saw the videos of children's with disabilities, because that's a hard thing. It's hard enough when a kid gets their first haircut. I was with my nephew when he got his first haircut, and boy, he was moving around and everything else. But it was a special moment for me as his auntie to be there for his first haircut. But I can imagine a mom or a dad bringing their child to try to get their first haircut, and they have a disability or autism, and it takes a great deal of patience. So I have a proclamation, but I'd like to show this video that captured my attention and attention all over the country, it went viral, of Vernon and what he has contributed.
He did such an incredible job. It was truly life-changing.
Vernon Jackson has been cutting hair for 20 years. But in 2021, he began the Gifted Event.
The Gifted Event is a haircut program designed for any child that has sensitivities to getting haircuts.
It all began because of a need Jackson saw in his community.
Good job.
The need for a safe space for children who live life differently.
I could have been one of those barbers or stylists that said no, and which also goes into my why again, the fact that I knew that at least I could do the work from a place of love.
And that love is felt all around the tri-states and the globe. Jackson has gone Jackson has gone viral on TikTok, Instagram, and YouTube, sharing videos of his haircuts and the progress each child makes.
I know you're nervous. Can women high five?
His most recent viral TikTok with 42.5 million views features 10-year-old Harry from Kentucky.
We tried haircuts in the past before. They didn't really work out.
But that all changed with Jackson and the Gifted Event.
He made sure that Harry trusted him. He made sure that Harry felt safe.
I feel a lot better that he's getting haircuts and less jealous, because his hair was so long.
And Harry has loved the experience too.
Harry sat in chair, he danced, you know, he was in an incredible mood, and he really enjoyed the experience.
Did you have fun your last haircut?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you excited for your next one?
Yeah.
Every haircut given by the Gifted Event is free, and now through Giving Tuesday, Jackson is fundraising to continue his work of creating a safe space.
So right now fundraising for next year, which covers 1,000-plus haircuts.
The money also funds the behind-the-scenes work and the gifted experience, which helps families financially travel to Cincinnati to receive a haircut from Jackson.
This is what I get to do. I get to do this.
To donate, you can visit wcpo.com. In Cincinnati, Marlena Lang, WCPO 9 News.
So Mr. Jackson, you could come up here. We're going to read this proclamation. Proclamation honoring Vernon Jackson and recognition of Autism Acceptance Month of 2025. Whereas April is recognized nationally as Autism Acceptance Month, a time to elevate voices within the autism community and to foster inclusion, understanding, and respect for all people regardless of their neurodiversity. Whereas the 2025 theme, Autism Is, calls on us to reflect on autism as both a deeply personal identity and shared human experience, one that requires not only awareness but also meaningful action and lifelong support. Whereas Mr. Vernon Jackson, a proud Cincinnati native of over 40 years, has become a national voice and viral sensation for equity and empathy through his pioneering creation, the Gifted Event, which provides an inclusive, patient, and sensory-friendly haircutting experience for children with special needs at his shop, Noble Barber and Beauty in Quarryville. Whereas with more than 30 million views worldwide, Vernon's selfless work has captured the hearts of a global audience, turning a simple act of kindness into a wonderful movement of autism acceptance and compassionate leadership. Whereas Vernon Jackson is a two-time published author, Amazon bestselling writer of The Looking Glass, and respected speaker, influencer, and community advocate who embodies servant leadership with humility, vulnerability, and bold authenticity. Whereas his appearance on The Jennifer Hudson Show alongside his growing list of accolades affirms that his impact is not just local, but universal. Still, he remains grounded in his belief that you can be successful by being who you are, not a character, not a character you were told to become. Vernon is not only a creator and entrepreneur, but a cultural pillar in the Cincinnati region, serving a bridge between ability and access, between self-worth and self-expression, and between community and care. His unwavering commitment to inclusion has redefined what it means to show up for others. Now therefore, the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners extend its deepest gratitude to Mr. Vernon Jackson for his continued contributions to the special needs community and his steadfast dedication to advocating autism acceptance with love, leadership, and the power of inclusion. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby declare the day of April 25th, my birthday, 2025, as Vernon Jackson Day in all of Hamilton County, and is signed by all three commissioners. Congratulations. Now before you, before you say something, we both would like to say something. I just want to say that thank you for what you do and for showing that everyone can do something to give back in their field. You don't have to be an elected official, you don't have to be, you know, no one has to appoint you to do it. Everyone can take their God-given gift and give back, and I think you've shown that. You just did this, you didn't start off trying to say, I'm going to have a movement. You started out helping one child at a time, helping families. And I just wanted to thank you, because I know like you've been on Worldwide Jennifer Hudson and everything, but I want to tell them, he belongs to Hamilton County. And I like the fact that people are coming here to bring their children to be able to get the experience, and you're helping so many families right here in Hamilton County. So I just want to thank you. I've known you a long time, and then I saw you start this, and I'm like, oh my God, because you've always wanted and have always given back. But to use your gift to help families across this country is just amazing. So thank you, that's why I wanted to honor you, Commissioner President Dreehouse.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here. So I have a son who was, he didn't sit still much when he was younger, and I used to have to sit with him, around him, when he got his haircut, because of the noise, because of just the, the activity on, so close to him. And so, and that took a couple of years to grow out of. And so it was challenging to find someone who was able to come into that space and say, I've got this, let's get a haircut, right? And so it is a special gift that you have. I mean, it's obvious when you see, when you, we see you work with these young people, but what a gift you have. And I think it's remarkable, and I think it's, it will be your legacy. It's really amazing. So I, and I have a question for you, and I hope you'll address it in your comments. I'm wondering how you came to a place where you said to yourself, this is something I want to work on, these are kids I want to work with, and I want to make sure that everybody knows that that child can come here, and I have this special relationship with these kids, and I can get this done. So how, how does, I assume you were just a regular barber before that, and so how does that happen?
You know, so, to be honest with you, I tell people all the time, like, I don't like cutting kids' hair. I never did, right? I love kids, I love kids, I volunteer with kids, always have a great experience. But we, as you mentioned, a first haircut is a very challenging experience, not to mention in my, in my craft, whether it was stylists or it was barbers, what happens is we have to work with our time, we maximize our time to make the most money. And also, we have to, you know, we have the parents' expectations, they have the reality of the child. And so it can be a very stressful time if your mind and your heart isn't tuned for that kind of work. And so, you know, I make, I have to make sure I express that reality so that you understand that the real gift of what it is that I do was created by God, that, that the gift of what I do, that my heart being tuned and adjusted to be able to have the capacity to give the love that I give and the patience that I give to the kids, was one that only God could have done, to posture me in a way to connect with the kids that I had no idea of knowing how to do. So where I no longer have to worry about charging the families, because the people responded, the way that I responded to the gift that I was given, to say, listen, I want to sponsor a haircut. So you know more, so no, I have to worry about how much time to give the kids to get 30 minutes, or as much time they need to adjust, right? I don't have to worry about the money, because I have to worry about having a conversation with the parents that that mean that they need the service that I have to give, without having to worry about how much they go charge, because especially in this community, everything costs, because it takes specialists for everything that they need, you know? And so then the public gets the gift of having their heart adjusted and getting a perspective and being softened, so it becomes bigger. The haircut is the introduction, to have everyone's hearts expanded, to have more compassion and more patience with each other, they don't understand what's happening on the outside, right? So, you know, the why comes in, in allowing us to, you know, no matter what you have going on in your life, your goal for your life, to leave room to have God come in and do what only God can do. And that is, that's the beauty of it, you know what I'm saying? The gift is so much, the Gifted Event is so much bigger than the haircuts, because I talk to the parents, I speak to the parents, remind them that you're not, you're not alone in what you do, and that you are not a bad parent if you don't know what to do, you know what I'm saying? And, you know, it's hard for parents in general to know what to do with their, with their neurotypical child, let alone a child that's neurodiverse, and then to have the pressures of the world and the public that don't understand what's going on, have their own opinions that, about what's happening, right? So, so my job and my, and, and, you know, Alicia, you know, me doing poetry back in the day and everything I've done, and has been the dojo for me to be able to do what I do at the stage that I, that I'm doing it as. And the most, and for me, the gift is I get to do it by being myself. I'm not projecting, I'm not, I'm not showing out, or, no, I'm literally living my life so that anyone that's out here that's an earshot of this message, know that your gift that we have to offer doesn't require you to be perfect, it requires you to have the capacity to lean in.
Well, let me just say, hallelujah to that. But we didn't give the proper applause, because we went right in. We are excited to declare in all of Hamilton County Vernon Jackson Day. So we gonna come around, take a picture.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. It's hard to, it's hard to know how to move on.
Right.
After a presentation like that. But we are going to move into public comments. Do we have anybody for public comment? No, okay. Then comments and motions of the commissioners, Commissioner Reese.
Thank you. I do have another, we may have a slide. I want to thank the Office of Youth and the 513 Relief Team for our second annual youth employment kickoff. We're talking about jobs for our, our youth, and I think last year totally we had 1,300 throughout the summer. We still are taking applications, but it was a great day, a great event. It was in the West End at Jerell Baptist Church. I want to thank Pastor Quentin Monroe and Jerell for allowing us to host us there. It was a free event. We had, a lot of parents are very thankful for being able to get the, the checks, physicals on the bus at no cost. Can you imagine that? No copay, no cost, and parents were great. They were so excited, because a lot of times that hinders a young person from getting an employment. And I want to thank UC Health was on there doing those free checkups with us and partnership with us. And I want to thank Sarah and Trevina and the entire team. Director Patton was there himself. Health Commissioner, County Commission Health Commissioner Kesterman was on the bus himself doing the birth certificates, free birth certificates. And so he was excited, and a lot of people wanted that as well. We were able to provide service for almost, almost 1,000 youth, certainly, and we had some other locations as well that day, but this was the kickoff. And I want to thank our DJ from, that helped us out from our reentry office. So not only do they help with reentry, you have a DJ. So that was great. It was a great event, and wanted to acknowledge every single, every single person that helped make this possible. So just thank you to the 513 Relief Team, thank you to the Office of Youth Team, thank you to the Public Health, thank you to UC Health, and hopefully I didn't miss anyone, but I wanted to acknowledge that. People can still go and apply for youth employment, and they can go to our 513relief.org website and find out about more applications. Again, our focus is that we've got to get our youth program, our youth employment program to the youth before the street program gets to the youth. And so our team is very aggressive in getting out and helping get our youth connected. Harbor and Talbert House are the ones that have the contract for youth employment for us, and so we'll be getting, we have a preliminary report, but we'll get a final report on the total numbers once, you know, once all of the different programs, we've got some other pop-ups that they're doing, registration for summer jobs. The other thing I think is about this program is so great, is that we've got a lot of small businesses that would love to host a young person for the summer and mentor them and get them some work experience, but don't have the budget to do that. Well, you could partner with Harbor and Talbert House, and now they will pay for the young person if you will be the site. And I just think that's a win-win. So I want to make sure more nonprofits and small businesses can participate with this program, because we'll have the youth, we just need a place to place them. And we've got a number of ways that you can connect with us. It's not just one type of job, and that's what I think is great. When I was younger, it was only like one or two types of jobs. We've got all kinds, how to be an entrepreneur, you get paid to become an entrepreneur. We had a braiding program, we had people there braiding hair, free haircuts, how to be a barber, just like we just saw Mr. Vernon Jackson. So I just want to give them a big round of applause. Again, thanking them for all of their help, and if I miss someone, I apologize, but thank you to the entire team. So I have that, and a couple other things. I got one other thing, like a couple other things. One is Mr. Aludo, I wanted to, we had had some issues with some of our service providers that provide group home services through Jobs and Family Services, and we had some issues of some late pay. We had a couple of times. And I was stopped on Resurrection Sunday at church by someone saying they're at it again, saying it's been a year since they've been paid. So I wanted to get an update to our board, maybe not today, but get an update, because I just don't know why we keep having that problem. We've got to get that solved, because once again, they said Butler County and Warren County, they'd rather do business with them, they said they pay on time, and that Hamilton County does not pay on time. And I didn't like hearing that, because we like to be first. So I'd like to figure out, find out what's going on, and has, and how can we, do we need to look at what Butler and Warren is doing? Because they said that there's a lot of paperwork they have to fill out, a lot of things they have to get approved for, and they have to do it by a certain time. But then when it's time to pay, they're not getting paid on, at a time. They don't have, we don't have a deadline on pay, but we got a deadline on paperwork. I would love to have a prompt pay, but we don't make the laws here. But when I was at the city, I'm one of the co, I'm the main author of the prompt pay law, and that's what they still have to this day. So I would love to make sure that we are doing prompt pay, because I know we promote prompt pay, but we've got to make sure that that gets resolved. Speaking of getting things resolved, this elevators is out of line. We keep saying we got a brand-new elevator. I don't see how you have a brand-new elevator and it's been broke down at least two or three times, and it hasn't even been brand-new for a year. I mean, I'm downstairs trying to get, employees trying to get, they're already small elevators. We have an elevator problem in Hamilton County, this building, and I know some other buildings. And I just want to get a real rep- And I just wanna get a real report. I don't see how these are new elevators and they're breaking down already. So I wanna put that on the table, that, uh, we got to solve the elevator problem. Uh, my next thing I wanted to highlight is that, uh, Tuesday, we had a presentation on the MOU, a proposed MOU with the, um, between the county and the Bengals. And it's been a lot of confusion, because, uh, most people think, because we've been talking about the lease, the lease, and the lease is about to expire. And I know that we had voted on, I guess, some lawyers and money to negotiate the lease. And I'm come from marketing, communications, I'm a communications person, so I know a PR stunt when I see one. And it was interesting, people were calling us saying, oh, you got the lease done. And it was interesting that on every single media outlet, and this is unusual, this is how you, I'm gonna give you all the marketing study, if you see the same headline in every single news outlet, more than likely, it's a PR campaign. If you turn on every channel, it said the same thing. County and Bengals reach a deal. If you read county Bengals reach a deal. And all of them, it almost seemed pre-done, because I know some of them can't write that fast to get the article out. Every single one of them had the same talking points. And I wanna be just clear, because when they say county, I wanna be clear that I am not, I'm one of the county commissioners. Each of us have our own votes. Uh, but I wanna be clear that that did not include me. We did not vote on anything on Tuesday. We did not have anything presented that was a lease. We've paid for people to go, I thought you all were negotiating a lease, you came back with a MOU. I didn't remember voting for you to negotiate a MOU. I thought I was voting originally for you all to go get a lease. And you never come back with a lease. So I don't know what these other conversations were. I was not a part of it, privy to it, nor did I support it. And so only one came out with what really went happen, that's Jason Williams. Now Jason Williams last week wrote, because the original deal has all three Republicans. Beddinghouse, Nyer, and Dowlin is on the bad lease. And everybody blames Beddinghouse. At least Beddinghouse put his name out there and said he was leading it. That's what's on here. Then Williams comes out, Jason Williams in Inquirer comes out and says Republicans are finally standing up. And he talks about the Speaker of the House. And there was a headline where the Speaker of the House said he does not support money for the Bengals in the request of the county. Now we had sent talking points, and I say we, I'm not included. I was told that our communications person sent talking points to the Speaker of the House, who was getting ready to go on the Willie Cunningham Show. And he, he took those talking points and came back and said he ain't going with us. I never voted to send any talking points for a radio interview by the Speaker of the House. I wanna be clear on this transparency part. Second, I say, did we deliver the package of what we supposedly did agree to, to the Bengals? I thought it had been delivered a year ago, but we said, no, it won't be done. I said, get it to them right away. We get it to them on a Friday. And then I understand there was a meeting that I didn't know nothing about that was on Monday. Now what came out of Monday's meeting, only thing I know about is a MOU and a public relations campaign. Because remember now, I come out of public relations, so I understand what the campaigns are. So then I go this morning and Williams, Jason Williams works, runs another thing. He says, "An agreement about an, uh, uh, says, "An agreement about an agreement is the latest spin on the Bengals County dealings." Now I remember conversations when I said, "This is a lopsided deal, ninety-four percent the taxpayers gotta pay." And the ownership only pays six percent. And the response was, "Well, last time Todd Purtoon got us on PR. And we not gonna get tangled on PR." And that's what came to my mind, because that's what it is, a PR campaign, and we're hiding behind the word county. I want, when we do these things, even when me, sometimes I vote, it might, I'm on the times where on the property taxes, it was two to one. I wouldn't mind they named my name, that I was for the property tax rollback. I want names. Don't come in talking about county, so people can run up to me and say, Reese, why did you go along with this? If you're gonna do it, we gonna put our names on each of us. And I don't have a problem with that, if I decide whatever I decide. But this thing that we pulled together on Tuesday, you can see a PR spin a mile away. I got people calling me saying, "Oh, did you, did you vote for that lease?" There was never a vote on the lease. "Oh, the deal is done." There's no deal been done. And the reality is, the MOU that you're presenting is a win for the Bengals ownership. They're undefeated against the county. They're undefeated. They beat us in nineteen ninety-seven. They beat us when we went with thirty-nine million dollars and didn't get a lease. They beat us when we went with the grass, whatever we did with the grass, we still ain't getting no lease. They beat us when they said, "We ain't talking about it right now, but we'll talk about it after the season." They beat us when they got a naming rights deal that made sure, we didn't know how much it was, and made sure it was under the threshold, so the taxpayers can't benefit. They beat us when they said no to a watch party, said we can't do it, but came back with a watch party and now they gonna charge for it. They're undefeated against us so far, against the taxpayers. And so this is another PR spin. I like what he said in here. He said, "Let's try to cut through the PR spin of this week's announcement that Hamilton County and the Cincinnati Bengals have reached a partial stadium improvement agreement, which these newfound fast friends hope will lead to an announcement about an agreement." Oh, sorry, it wasn't an announcement about an agreement to set up an announcement, but about an agreement which then could be a step toward another announcement about another agreement. Did you get all that? No worries if you didn't. Here's all you need to know. The memorandum of understanding calling for the county and the team to make a hundred and eighty-four million dollars in improvements to Paycor Stadium was an effort to start creating a positive narrative for the Bengals around the stadium negotiations. It's all about promoting the Bengals pick, with Bengals would pick up almost a tab of a hundred and twenty million. Wow, the Bengals are actually going to spend over sixty-five percent of a stadium improvement phase? Since when did that happen? Take that, critics. It goes on, "The full freight, uh, to the overall Paycor Stadium is eight hundred and thirty million dollars." Eight hundred and thirty. How much is going toward, how much is the Bengals putting toward that? Bengals are tired of being slammed on stadium issues. They don't want a public fight, yet they still want another sweetheart deal. Don't forget that. Meanwhile, there's a brief inside the Bengals and county offices that the state should pay a big chunk of the bill. There's a sense that the state owes the Bengals, because the Ohio House recently passed six hundred million dollars in bonds to plan to build the Cleveland. Well, he goes on, and you all can say it, um, he goes on to say, "We don't need announcements about announcements." I would agree with that. The MOU is a piece of paper that says Bengals and counties plan to do a hundred and eighty-four million dollars on stadium improvements over the next year. It hasn't been voted on. Key word, it hasn't been voted on. But every media, so somebody gave a press release, I hope it don't come back to overhear. I hope there was no meetings of a joint press release. I hope there was no private meetings on how we gonna spin this to the people. Because I smelled something fishy myself, that every single newscast said the same thing, we had a deal. And I just, I can't believe they just came out high in the sky with that headline. It says here, "It hasn't been voted on and is not legally binding. The county spun it forward and said the MOU could be a step toward a new long-term lease agreement." Didn't I already say that? And I even, haven't even talked to him. Maybe so, but spare us the splashy press announcements. What the public really needs is transparency. How did the county and Bing-, and Bengals arrive at the one eighty-four million? But more importantly for me, is that we're spinning the people in a direction in a social media climate. It was on the Bengals page, I mean, all was at the same time. I mean, we hadn't even hit the gavel. It made Bengals Nation and, uh, national news and this, this, and this. It made everything and we never even had a vote. And I find it disrespectful to myself, who got elected. We always worked to take the power out of the elected people. Now, last time they said it was Bob, Commissioner Bob Beddinghouse, so he put himself out there. Now, I can't have that type of deal, but we had and then saying it's the whole county. I'm not supporting this MOU, I'll tell you that right now, until we get a lease. It's irresponsible. All we're doing, because they could still advance this same lease and they will now have sixty-five more million dollars. Now we said we put something in there, if you don't do this, we ain't gonna do that. But my whole point is, I voted for us to have a lease negotiation. I did not vote for a MOU negotiation. I did not vote for one second to be spent on the MOU. I voted for the lawyer and the person we hired and all that, and all that money that we spending to come out with a lease. And I just think it is a slap in the face to the voters, to the taxpayers, because they are confused. My office has gotten lots of calls, "Oh, man, they got the lease done. They said it's a done deal." Oh, man, it's, it, they don't come together. And then to say that the only way we can get state money is if we go and get, say we gonna give them additional sixty-five million dollars, that's not true. The bottom line is Cleveland, when they went up there, their ownership is putting up a lot of money. And then they're getting a loan that they gonna pay back. We go up there, you say, "The only way we can get some is if the county puts in sixty-five more million dollars to show we serious." When I met with the governor, we, that, that I had to, number one, I had to be voted to meet with the governor. So my colleagues had to vote, even though I was the president, if I could even be at that meeting. In that meeting, we told the governor, "We're serious." So everybody knows that we're serious. We had a meeting with all our legislators here from Southwest Ohio. We said, "We're serious." They know we serious. We don't have to give sixty-five more million dollars of taxpayer money to hope we can roll the dice and they'll hope to know that we're serious. The other thing they don't put on here is that when we did the, when they did the naming rights without us, by the way, without us, never want to tell us what it was, we found out by accident, because it was what everybody else could find out, because Paycor got bought by Paycheck. It's sixty-six million. You know what they gave them for sixty-six million? Now this was a heck of a deal. They gave, the Bengals ownership gave them sixteen years on our stadium for sixty-six million. We're asked to put up sixty-five million and we not getting one extra year. Not one. Not one. So for me, um, I just wanna be clear, because people been calling and asking, "I thought y'all had the lease done." And I know we could pay some maniacs, but we didn't say lease, we said Paycor Stadium. To the average person, what they wanna know is, do we have a deal or not on the lease? Are they staying extra time? Are we getting a lower, uh, uh, paying less? How are we getting this, maintaining this and all that off of us? This is what they wanna talk about. They don't wanna talk about no MOU. And I appreciate, we said, "Oh, we had to do it because of NFL." NFL has been screwing over the taxpayers of Hamilton County forever. We tried to have a free watch party in a stadium that we pay for and we own. And according to the Bengals ownership and Mr. Ludo, the letter that he provided, he claimed the NFL told us no. And then the NFL came back and said, they said, "You know what? I got a bright idea. Let's have a watch party." But now it's ninety-nine, ninety-nine. You can get in. Oh, and the NFL miraculously say, "It's so good." The NFL even has parameters, according to what Mr. Ludo told me. They only can borrow what the NFL feels is going to make money. So they claim that's why they could only get fifty or sixty million, when they giving other people hundreds of millions. So the NFL says, "We'll do it, but we wanna make money, because the money goes into a pot." Well, why would the taxpayers do anything? Well, we ain't gonna get nothing back. We gotta stop disrespecting the taxpayers. When it's time to give a break, we promised the taxpayers, not us, but the people who put it on the ballot, they promised the taxpayers thirty percent rebate every year, rollback. Every year we gotta vote on it, and every year y'all say, "Well, we can't do it, we ain't got no money, administrator, we ain't got no money." Now we all, we overrode them a couple of times. But every time, the taxpayer keeps losing. I don't see how we win giving up sixty-five million dollars. Now you'll say, "Well, it won't happen to twenty-six and when we, when, when, when we get that, we'll have..." Well, let's wait then. Let them pay for it. I'm gonna say this again. The, the better deal is, you guys go and pay the hundred and eighty-four million dollars, according to Forbes Magazine, you can afford it. Do what Cleveland's doing, their ownership is putting money up. And I don't even think they made Forbes Magazine, if I'm not mistaken. They're putting up almost a billion dollars. So y'all put up a hundred and eighty-four million, move along, do your thing and let us keep working on the lease. Now, in the lease negotiation, if we get it, then we can roll this into the total package. But what I see is, what I didn't want, a la Cartus, because that's what they've been doing, and never give us a new lease. And that's what I'm disappointed in. So today, of course, all of us have an opinion, but I'm giving you the facts. There was no vote on the MOU yesterday or Tuesday. I don't understand where these headlines came from. I have not seen whatever press releases that were running out. I, um, I did not myself vote for anybody to be going in negotiating a MOU. I thought we were negotiating a lease agreement. And that's what I wanna make clear to all the people who've been stopping me, who's been calling me, who's been angry, and, uh, I wanna say that. I don't think everything should be on the state. If the state don't come through, here's the deal. The state don't come through, they get the sixty-five million, we gonna roll these two years and move on. I, I just, I don't feel comfortable with it. But I never wanted to spend this much time on a MOU. I thought we were dealing with the lease. So I wanted to say that to those who had contacted me and contacted my office about they, you know, because it, the headlines, the deal is done, they've reached a deal, they've reached an agreement, they, that, they're thinking the lease. And, um, and then Williams has another one where he says, "Finally, Republicans stand up to the Cincinnati Bengals on stadium handouts." Well, if they're standing up, what are you saying? I'm sitting down? No, I, I'm, I'm not going for handouts. I'm going for a good deal for the taxpayers. So I wanted to bring that up because of the calls that I have been receiving and I wanna make it clear, and they could put my name, that I did not support that. And I wanna be identified as not supporting that. Uh, I'm looking for a win-win. And every time, we always say, "We got to give," and we gonna get a lease, and we just haven't, it hasn't materialized. Uh, so, uh, I'm hopeful that we'll have better news. Uh, but please, let's don't have the public feel like we're doing PR spins, PR campaigns. Our job is not to make anybody look good. Our job is to make sure that the taxpayers are well-protected. Uh, for me, I won't say our, my job, my job, I'm only gonna talk about me. My, that's my job. My job is not to come with the PR spin. At the end, when we have a real lease and we got something that the people can, then we come out with the press conference of a win-win. You don't go into any debate, any negotiation and just do this type of spin at the beginning. So that's what I wanted to say, based on all the calls that I received. Um, and, um, those are the, those are my final comments.
Thank you. Um, I, I have some comments of my own. I do wanna respond, I, not on the content of what was said, because we had a, a meeting about this on Tuesday. The press was here, they all heard the same thing at the same time. The press was here, they all heard the same thing at the same time. Um, so I, I don't know if there was confusion, where it came from. But I don't like the implication that the county, whoever that is, um, put a spin on something that was not accurate. Because the, the press was here. Um, I, I don't know how they interpreted. I didn't look at all the headlines and I had not seen all the comments. Um, but, you know, we had an open meeting in public to discuss the MOU, which is something that we all care about, um, as we've said, kind of bringing folks along as we go. We've got meetings planned now, um, as we go along, um, probably every other week, so that people can, um, have a certain level of education as to what we're doing. No one at that meeting ever said that this was related to the final lease, um, at least to my knowledge. I know I never said that. Uh, and so I just don't, I, I, the, the content is the content. We can disagree on, on the issues or, you know, the MOU or the lease or, uh, the content. But to imply that, um, I, I don't know where the implication was meant to land, uh, but to imply that people were saying things that were unclear on purpose is just not how we do business. And so I, I do want to, uh, at least from my perspective, clear the error on that. Um, I have-
I wasn't saying, I wasn't-
Well, you, you certainly didn't-
I like to see the press releases.
There was a spin on what happened.
I like to see the press releases that came out of the-
And I don't know where you're, I, I don't know where you meant that to land.
Yeah, I, I meant that I want to see the press releases that were passed. I don't know if Mr. Ludo-
They were from my office.
Oh, I thought it was from communication.
Well, so you misunderstood. They were from my office. I was very clear in the statement that I made and gave to the press. It in no way was meant to, nor did it confuse the issue. So if, if you're, if your implication is towards me-
My, my implication is toward-
Just be clear on, on what's going on here.
No, what's clear is, my implication is exactly what I said. I wanted to know with the county, there's been meetings I don't know anything about. I want to know what is the PR plan? And then there was no retraction. Usually when something is wrong, we send the communication person, that was an error, that was not correct information.
Commissioner, let, I, I would like-
That's all I was asking.
I, I heard what you were saying. So, uh, the, the statement was clear, they were here at the meeting. So if there was any confusion, it was on the part of the press. And, and I, if there was confusion, I don't know how there was, because we were pretty clear on this day as that we weren't taking a vote, that we're taking a vote next week. It was all said in public. So, uh, we're, we're gonna move on from this issue. But I, I just, if, if you've got a need for clarity, please reach out to my office and I'll be happy to clarify. Um, so there are a couple of other things going on, um, outside of the Bengals lease and the Bengals, um, MOU. Um, I attended on behalf of the commission, the National Line Worker Event that was sponsored by Duke Energy. This is a, an event much like the event we just, or the proclamation we just had earlier to recognize those in our community that do really dangerous jobs. And so these are the line workers that are out in inclement weather, when there's wind and rain and, and ice, and, uh, making sure that we've got, uh, warm homes to go back to. So, uh, we did a proclamation in honor of the line workers. Um, I also spoke on behalf of the commission on, at the Office of Reentry, Breaking the Cycle of Incarceration. Trina Jackson put together a group, uh, to continue to talk about the Office of Reentry, the work they're doing to keep people from going back into the justice system. And she's, she and her team were there and they're doing tremendous work. Um, we also had an event here from, uh, sponsored by the World Affairs Council. It was related to the Domestic Violence Task Force that the county has. The sheriff is leading the charge on that and she was here with the prosecutor. Commissioner Women and Girls was represented, as was, uh, one of the judges, Ann Flotman was here as well. So, um, thank you to them for bringing the international delegation here to Hamilton County so that we can talk about the collaboration in the space of domestic violence. Um, and then lastly, I wanted to make an announcement. So there has been a date set for the naming of the Norwood Lateral. It's going to be the Bridget Kelly Norwood Lateral. Uh, and so Catherine Ingram, Senator from, uh, Hamilton County, has led the charge on this. She got the legislation passed. And so the dedication will be on May 1st at 1:30. We are still working on the location, um, but it will most likely be at the Board of Elections, which is right next to the Norwood Lateral. So I just did want to put that out there. Everyone is welcome. I, I'm saying that on behalf of the Senator. I saw her this morning at a breakfast for Bridget Kelly and she's very excited about, um, being able to rename the lateral in honor of our friend Bridget Kelly. So I did want to make sure that the public was aware of that ceremony that's happening and all are welcome to participate. Um, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to the administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, just a, a couple of quick comments. I don't have any by leave items today, uh, but just a, a brief comment on the, the, the MOU, since that'll be coming back up on, on Tuesday. From the administration's perspective, and I think the board's had this discussion, uh, already today, but, um, there was no press release that went out on this, uh, in advance. We did let the media know this was, was occurring. Um, we wanted to make sure, because the board got the, the MOU late on Monday, wanted to make sure that there was time to inform the media, since it would be discussed on Tuesday. Uh, but that was pretty much the extent of it. My understanding is, is that there was a bit of a domino effect in terms of media outlets picking up on, on a headline that the first entity, uh, had, had published. So maybe, not a media expert, but maybe that is how, uh, some of that, uh, some of that same language was, was used. Um, we, we do regularly, Commissioner Reese, as you indicated, when we notice something in an article that, uh, isn't accurate, um, we reach out to those, uh, those outlets to, to correct. We, um, there, there was some confusion that, um, indicated there was, and I think it was because of maybe some of the, the verbiage that was used, um, by one of the presenters on Tuesday, that the team had signed, uh, the agreement. Uh, there was some confusion about that. So we reached out and say, no, this hasn't been signed. I think the term that was used was signed off, uh, which meant okay with, but not actually executed. So, but there was no, there was no press release that, that went out, um, trying to spin this as, as the lease or as a, as a done deal or, or, or anything, anything like that. I mean, at the end of the day, and I'm happy to sit down with anyone, um, who wants to understand, um, we did, there was no intention, I think we walked through it pretty clearly on Tuesday, that, uh, to say that this was about a final lease. Um, it was, I would also say that it was more than, and it is more than just than, uh, than, than PR. Um, this, what, this is an agreement that is necessary to do a couple of things, uh, to keep moving towards, uh, a final lease, to secure, uh, NFL financing and funding, and, and to keep planning and authorize the county and the team to continue planning and expending dollars on planning and some initial procurement on long lead time items in advance of 26, recognizing, uh, that, uh, it will, that some of these things have, have, uh, take a long time to design, to engineer, uh, and, and to purchase. So that was, that was the, that's the intent, uh, of the, of the MOU. Um, there is, as the board was made aware on Tuesday, there is, uh, language, uh, in the MOU that allows, uh, us to, if we don't get where we want on the lease, uh, to, uh, to reduce or terminate, uh, the, the funding that, that we authorize in this. The team has the same, uh, the same, uh, ability, uh, under it as well. Uh, and, uh, so there are some protections, uh, built in to make sure that if we don't get where we, where we want to be, that, uh, that we are, are not out, uh, funding. So I just, again, happy to sit down. I've not spoken directly with any media outlets on this, but happy to if there's, uh, if, if it's, uh, necessary to clarify some of this, because I, I do, uh, not want to put the board in a, in an awkward situation on, on this. There was never an intent. I, I don't think I presented it this way, uh, nor did the documents we sent, sent to anybody indicate that we were done with the lease or that this was all anyone was going to be committing, uh, to, to the final renovation. So I just wanted to, to offer those, uh, brief comments.
Mr. Ludo, the problem is, is the taxpayers are confused. It's not about, uh, the media. And I stand by my statements. I'm not backing off. Because, uh, the statements come from the people calling me saying they confused. And I think that's a dangerous situation. So, uh, again, I mean, I'm looking for the lease and we now doing MOUs instead of a lease. So, uh, I stand by those statements. I don't have to reach out to anybody's offices, uh, because I've, I, I'm, these people are reaching out to me. I'm sure they can reach out to other offices, but it's a confusion. And like we know, once you go viral, I mean, it's not just, uh, one local newscaster. It went everywhere. It's on all their social platforms everywhere. So I'm just saying, the people are confused. I want to be clear, because people come in, oh, it's me. It is not a personality. I'm here representing the people that voted for me. And they're confused. And, uh, so when they're confused, then we're not, for me, we're not going in the right direction if they're confused. So, again, my focus is the lease and that's what we said we were supposed to be doing. And now we come with 65 million dollars on extra. Uh, it's costing us now more money. We're putting more money down and we don't have a lease. So that's my position. I stand by it. I stand by what I said. Uh, and I, I, and I'm not like looking at headlines or anything like that, but I'm in marketing, so I do see what's going on. I know what's trending. I know what's out there. I know how you do social media. I know, uh, how you put these campaigns together. And I'm just saying, it, when the people are, our whole job is that the citizens that we represent, the taxpayers, that they're clear on it. And that's where we're, it's not about me being clear on it, it's they're clear on it. Because they're the ones paying for this. And when they're not clear on it, yes, I'm going to speak up and I'm going to speak out.
Thank you. Thank you for your con, hopefully this meeting has been clarified and hopefully your office will be clarifying. We will be-
But it's not my office being clarified.
We're not the only one getting emails, Commissioner.
It's the other ones being clarified.
We're all trying to clarify the situation.
Right.
So, Commissioner Ludo was waiting.
And when you have your point, I let you make your point. Every time I make a point, y'all want to challenge me. I'm speaking, I'm not gonna be muzzled, I'm not gonna be censored.
We'll just take your time, Commissioner.
And I can speak, and that's my point. Yes, I will take my time. Others have done it as well. So, Mr. Ludo, that is my point. I want to make sure the taxpayers know, so they are aware and they understand it. Not necessarily my office on it.
Understood, and, and I think we completely agree with you on that. And the presentation on Tuesday was designed to, to, uh, provide that clarity, to the degree that it wasn't clear, we'll keep, um, messaging. And as I said, uh, as the media is our funnel to the taxpayers on this many times, we'll continue to work with them to make sure that this is, is in fact clear.
Thank you.
Um, one final comment.
Can I just say that we both did do interviews after the meeting? So there was, I, I just, there's this implication that there was an intentional campaign to confuse the taxpayers, who I also represent, i- is just not the case. And I, I just, we all have our opinions, we all can say what we want through our offices. We've all done press comments on this. Um, but there was no campaign, as was stated, to confuse people about what we did on Tuesday. We did it in public with all the press here. So I just, i- i- I'm not taking issue with your position on this issue. You've been very clear, we've all been very clear. It's not about that. It's about, um, this, uh, this suggestion that we're somehow doing something to confuse the taxpayers that I take great offense to. I mean, we're, we're trying, I issued a statement to be very clear as a matter of fact, um, not to confuse things. So I just, that, that's, that's my only issue, Commissioner. I don't, I don't mean to cut you off. I mean, you, you take a lot of time talking about the Bengal stuff and that's fine, um, but I-
And other stuff, not just the Bengals. Other, I'm, I'm on other issues.
Today, it's been about Bengals. Um, so I just, that's my, my only issue. I, you know. All right, uh, Administrator, you have one more thing to use?
Just one more thing, Commissioners, on a completely different topic. I just wanted to, um, advise the board that, as, as you're aware, um, every other Thursday, we do an onboarding, uh, of employees, uh, new employees to the county. It was a huge class, uh, this morning, which I'm really proud of and really excited about, um, both at, uh, Job and Family Services and over here at the Administration Building. Uh, importantly, as it relates to, uh, many of the board's priorities, uh, seven new 911 communications officers, uh, which brings our deficit, uh, we've got 60 on the table of organization. Uh, we are down only three, uh, officers, which you might remember, at one point, we were down, I believe, close to 20. Um, and when you do that, you're talking about, um, mandatory overtime for call, for, uh, communications officers. Um, you're talking about more stress and more strain in a job that is, is obviously already very stressful. Uh, so I just want to congratulate these seven 911 operators and coming, uh, coming on board, and also Andy Knapp and our HR office for continuing to move that forward. Also, not to leave them out, we had two facility project managers, also 13 children services caseworkers, uh, as well as some, uh, three eligibility techs and an employment services technician as well. So really good day in terms of bringing some new, uh, passion and blood into the county today, so just wanted to advise the board on that.
Yep.
And that'll complete my comments, Commissioner.
Really great news. Thank you. All right, uh, let's move to the regular agenda. We've got the engineer here. The engineer, you, you have the first four on the regular agenda and you've also got the first item on the consent agenda. So let's run through the first four and then I'm going to ask you to speak to the fifth as well.
Sure. Be glad to.
Thank you.
And, and I would like to thank the board for recognizing work zone safety awareness. Um, a majority of my workers are those people out there in the vests. And, uh, everybody needs to remember that those people with those high vis vests are parents, neighbors and coworkers. Please protect them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, item number one is resolution, uh, determining that a temporary construction easement located at 10797 Hamilton Avenue in Springfield Township is no longer necessary for county purposes. Um, this is from a project back in 1994. Um, this is just releasing the construction easement. Item number two is a resolution approving the Second Amendment to an agreement with Bearbacher for engineering services on Fields Erdel and McCauley Road. Um, this project is in Sharonville in Sycamore Ta, excuse me, Sycamore Township. Um, the second agreement is in the amount of $59,280 out of permissive auto funds, and this is for the right-of-way development plans. Item number three is a resolution for the 2025 thermoplastic and epoxy pavement striping program in, uh, various townships. Well, we looked at open bids on May 22nd with an engineer's estimate of $350,000 out of the road and bridge fund. Item number four is a resolution for much more road improvements from Walton Creek to the Indian Hill Corp. Um, this will allow us to put this project out to bid in Columbia Township. The engineer's estimate is $924,000. We did obtain an Ohio Public Works grant, uh, to cover 60% of that cost in the amount of $554,400. The remaining will amount of the permissive auto fund.
Thank you. And before we go any further, um, Commissioner, any questions regarding items one through four?
Uh, just had one question. Um, can you go over the Fields Erdel component? I know this is a multi, we have lots of projects.
Yes, this is Fields Erdel, uh, intersections with McCauley and Fields Erdel and Conray intersections. Uh, this project will be built in the next couple of years. This is, uh, to allow us to complete the right-of-way plans to get the right-of-way needed to do those intersection improvements.
Okay. Thank you.
With no further questions, I'm going to, uh, offer a motion to approve of items one through four.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. Eric, are you prepared to talk to item five?
Sure, that's just a, a, that's just a budget adjustment, moving the, the money over to the appropriate funds for the thermoplastic project.
I see. Okay, very good. Um, all right, well, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
All right, um, Jeff, could you walk us through then items six until 17?
Certainly. The consent agenda, as you indicated, Commissioner, starts with item five. Engineer Beck just explained item five. Uh, item number six is the allocation of 150,000 to support, uh, a countywide sports commission, uh, designed to attract, uh, professional and collegiate amateur sports to, to the county. Uh, per the agreement, there was a question on this. The agreement indicates that the funding is, uh, for Hamilton County and is linked to marketing, uh, solely to marketing and bid expenses. solely to marketing and bid expenses. Again, this was consistent with the resolution passed in the 2025 budget. Item number seven are bid awards and contracts authorized or executed by the purchasing department at 1.39 million. Item number eight, Commissioners, is a resolution authorizing, actually, eight through 10 are all solid waste and recycling grants. Item number eight is an agreement with the Winds Green Accelerator for a shoe recycling program, $14,986. Item number nine is an agreement with Deer Park for recycling containers in Chamberlain Park at $7,723. Item number 10 is a resolution between the County and Green Umbrella for a composting project in Camp Washington at $15,000. Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of cyber insurance for the county. Item number 12 begins some Job and Family Services items. The Board had asked that I begin to tally the total of these. I believe the total today is approximately 5.49 million. I'll just walk through these very, very quickly. The first is the renewal of an agreement with Talbert House for Youth Employment Services at 4.7 million. Item 13 is renewal of a single-source agreement with Step Hire Nella's Place for Independent Living Services, $406,000. 14 is a renewal with the National Youth Advocate Program for family preservation continuum services at $200,000. Item number 16 is a resolution authorizing a sub-recipient agreement between the Board and Cincy Smiles on behalf of Planning and Development for $48,021. This is a workforce development grant for their dental training program. Item 17 is a travel request, requesting the authorization for two county employees in the Coroner's Office to travel to Anaheim, California. That is the consent agenda, Commissioners. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I just have a quick question on item number 12. Could you dig in just a little bit on that? The dollar amount is very high, and so I would like to just get a better understanding of what this contract is for.
Commissioner, I believe John Nelson is here. I would ask John to provide some light on this item.
Yeah. Commissioner, so this is for the youth employment program that we do through the 513 Relief Bus and just other ways through public events as well. So I think the program actually originally started as a TANF-funded program, and we think we also have some VO dollars that do a similar program. Through the direction of the Board, we were able to expand this program out to a year-long program. So we supplement what we get in TANF dollars and in VO dollars then to add the levy dollars to have a much more robust youth employment program.
Do you know which, what portion of this is levy versus the others?
I'll have to dig into that.
Okay, yeah, just at a future date. That's fine.
I can send that over. And so there's two vendors that do this. One is Talbert House, and there's going to be Harbor as well. That's another vendor, and that's a little over 1.5 million as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Thank you. Following up on item number 12, I understand expansion and robust, but do we have, like, how many more youth will be employed? And then, secondly, is the majority, I want to make sure I'm sure, is the majority of those dollars going toward the, I guess, the pay that the youth get to work?
That is correct.
Not going toward, like, just admin?
No, no, this is not administration. This is all basically wages that, there is a small component that is administration, but the majority of it is actual wages that are paid out to the youth that are employed through the program.
Okay. And then, if you don't have it today, get it to, maybe get it to us another time. How many more youth do we think we could?
Yes, between the TANF and the levy. Yes, I can give that breakdown for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was it for that. But I did want to highlight, oh, I'm sorry. Are you done with your?
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to highlight items number, item number 16, Cincy Smiles. Certainly, I'm going to support this, but I do want to just highlight again that we are trying to get a partnership on dental for the 513 Relief Bus. We got a lot of folks needing help. I know we went out to Blue Ash one day when they do theirs, but we did have a meeting with, I think, Candace and Black Tech Week, and she had met with, I believe, Holly and some others. But in the meeting, they brought up this mobile bus that is going around that does dental service as a partnership with Procter &amp; Gamble. So just wanted to see, every time I see this, just wanted to see how we can better partner to try to get some dental or something on the bus. And so maybe we could partner with them and find out who this mobile unit is that Candace talked about that is partnering with Procter &amp; Gamble. So I do want to, just to highlight that again. The other thing I wanted to highlight was the, item number six. I'm supportive of this, so that we can be more aggressive in bringing sports events here. I do want to highlight two other things, though. I still believe that we should have an amateur sports facility, not funded by the county, but incentives in trying to get people to come here. I understand Summit Park possibly is doing something, and there may be some opportunity there, because when we're trying to bring these events to town, it's good to get them one year or two years, but it's better to have them every single weekend, because people are spending money every single weekend. I'm spending money every, I'm just the auntie, and I'm spending too much money going to these tournaments with my nieces and nephews. So I do think, I'd like to, I support this, but I also would like us to maybe reach out and see what's happening in Blue Ash and Summit Park and find out if there's some other opportunities there, because I don't think that should die. The other thing I wanted to just bring out with that, as we talk about the CVB, is that I did see their guidebook that they put out, and they indicated in the guidebook that that's what they put in all the travel places. They got it at the Rock and Roll, they named the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, they gave them the rest stops and those kind of things. And the Cincinnati Black Music Hall of Fame is very little, we're not on the calendar or anything, and they mentioned that it might be because they got to pay to be in there. And I think we kind of pay a lot of money, but I don't know if there is a pay. I'd like to know about it, because if it's putting it in the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, we certainly would want folks visiting there to want to come visit here. And so an explanation of who we are, because we're new, would be good, and to have our events on the calendar would also be good, because even though you're on the website, you got to look and look, but if you got that, if you're there and you grab that magazine, or if you're at that rest stop, you grab that magazine, and we're not included, that makes it a little bit tougher. So just wanted to highlight that as well. Those were my two things. Of course, all the things that's dealing with the environment, and it's very important. We had a great presentation on Tuesday, and we saw the article saying that the air quality is just really, really bad. So we definitely got to keep working on that. So those are the only comments that I had on those.
Thank you. Laura Wolf is online, and she's got more information regarding item number 12, on which we both had questions. So Laura, are you there?
I'm here.
There we go. Thank you.
Yes, I was just texting John to let him know. I did want to say, 3.1 million of the Talbert House contract is levy funded, and the contract is set to serve 1,000 youths this year. Is that helpful?
Yes, that's very helpful.
Thank you.
That's good for you.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you, Laura. Thanks for the clarification. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. If there are no more questions, I'm going to make a motion that we approve of consent agenda items five through 17.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir?
Very briefly, just a quick news update. I've just been texted that the elevator has been fixed. And my understanding is that the, and I'd heard this from the tech yesterday, as I was riding up in the elevator, that it appears that there was some damage caused by having the door hit as it was closing. So the bands that are in there got stretched out when it evidently got hit. So hopefully, this is a sign that something occurred to the elevator and that it's not a problem with the construction, that type of thing. So, but we'll keep an eye on it. Just wanted to let you know.
Thanks for the update. All right, I'm going to move that we go into Executive Section pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G2, consider the sale of property, period. Yes. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse? Commissioner Reese?
Yes. 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 Yes.